Welcome everyone, before we begin the meeting, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Carlos Graham, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear gracious and eternal Father, as we stand here this evening, we want to say thank you for allowing us to see the close of 2017. We want to say thank you for what you did in our lives in 2017. But more importantly, thank you for allowing us to see 2018. And we want to thank you in advance for what you're going to do in our lives in 2018. Lord, as we stand this evening, believing and trusting in your name, I ask that you stop by the hospitals, the prisons, and the nursing homes, and touch those in need of a miracle. Lord, we know that you are the doctor that has never lost a patient. You are the lawyer that has never lost a case. So right now, Lord, we need you, now more than ever. I am praying that in this year, you allow that man or that woman to produce that medicine that will cure cancer. We understand that doctors practice medicine, but Lord, you are medicine. Lord, bless this city, state, country, and world. Bless our first responders and military members, as they put their lives on the front line each and every day, to help ensure our safety and freedom. And finally, thank you for allowing your two best friends, grace and mercy, be a part of this world. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call to order the Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call please.
Fitzwater?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Hussey?
Here.
Kimna?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Here.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. I have one very special agenda item this evening. We would like to recognize our retiring city clerk, Mrs. Phyllis Powell, who is here this evening, and we have a lovely picture of Phyllis there on the screen even. So, Phyllis, if you'd like to come up to the podium tonight, and I know Phyllis has always been a lot behind the scenes, but we're gonna have you come to the podium. We're so used to having you up here, you don't get to be over at the podium that often. So, we are very proud of all the work that you have done for the city over the years, for many, many years, and you'll be greatly missed. And I know, it still doesn't quite seem real, I know you had the thing in your office at every day, you know, the countdown, if anyone went in the main office, you saw those circles every day. And we never really thought this day would come, but I'm very excited for you, you have your family here as well, and look forward to your retirement. But I'm going to present you a proclamation, I'm gonna come to the podium to do it with you. Alright, so first, I have a special orange corsage, because I know orange is your favorite color. Although, we're both wearing blue, and I'm gonna say, I did put some thought into this because I know that you are a number one Royals fan, so when we did our wear blue days, I do remember. And you're wearing blue too, so like, it's like we planned it, so, alright, and I got the magnetic one to make it easy to put on, so. How does this thing work? Oh, here we go. It'll be really easy, right? Oh, I got it. Maybe? Yep. Yay! Yes. And we will mention that we're having a special celebration on Friday here at City Hall for Phyllis, so, alright, we have a special proclamation for you. Whereas Phyllis Powell first came to the city of Jefferson in October of 1982, when City Hall was located at the corner of High and Monroe, and George Hartsfield was mayor. And whereas Phyllis wore many hats at City Hall, ranging from city clerk to the city councillor's legal secretary and the mayor's administrative assistant. And whereas, after a few years away from the city, Phyllis decided to accept the position of city clerk in the fall of 1993, and she has been city clerk ever since. And whereas, Phyllis has played a vital role in the inner workings of the city of Jefferson, her expertise and knowledge has educated many, and we will be forever grateful for the guidance we have received these last 24 years. Among her other duties as assigned, Phyllis is a key factor in making city council meetings run smoothly, and that agendas are done in a timely manner. And whereas, Phyllis Powell has displayed professionalism in her years of employment with the city of Jefferson, she has assisted the public, and has been an outstanding representative of the city in her professional and personal life. Whereas, we thank Phyllis Powell for her dedication and devoting so many years to the city of Jefferson, and wish her best for a long and happy retirement. Now therefore, I, Carrie Turgeon, Mayor of the city of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim the second day of January 2018 as Phyllis Powell Day in the city of Jefferson. So congratulations, Phyllis! So now you have your own special day. So that means, I know your family's here, we have your husband and your daughter and your granddaughter, that means she can do anything she wants today, so.
I would just like to say, I never thought that I could feel so happy and so sad all at the same time, but I know you youngsters in a few years will know exactly what I'm talking about, but it has been a real, real pleasure. And I just count my years sowed with the city of Jefferson as a seed, and hopefully they'll grow into something beautiful.
Thank you, that was sweet. Well, I have to say, Phyllis, in all the years you've been here, of course, I get elected mayor and you decide to leave, I'm like, wait a minute, Phyllis, what are you talking about? It's not personal, is it? And I know, I know it's not, but your advice to the council when it comes to our agendas and the detail is amazing. I know that I've been at many meetings from Missouri Municipal League, and they always talk about the importance of having a city clerk that knows what they're doing, and that is knowledgeable. And I never had a concern, I knew you were always on the ball and always on top of it, and you always knew the answer. There was never anything Phyllis did not know. In fact, I had a question before this meeting, and I ran out to the audience to ask Phyllis a question. And we're really looking forward, of course, to having Emily Donaldson here and taking on the city clerk position, but you always knew everything, and just were very happy to assist us from behind the scenes, and you never took any of the credit for it, but let me tell you, tonight, we're gonna celebrate you and give you credit for all of the years of service and all you've done to help the city of Jefferson. So, we really appreciate you, and we have, I'd like to present you the proclamation and a city coin, and a card also, so we can come up here and get a picture, and then we would also welcome your family to come up and get a picture.
This is my husband Harold, and he's watched every single council meeting that I've been at. And my daughter Melissa, and my granddaughter London. And they've been so helpful through the years.
Congratulations, Phyllis.
Is this your first actual day?
No. I wouldn't normally do this during a council meeting, but for Phyllis, I'm gonna do this. That is every day. That's awesome. Congratulations to Phyllis. Alright, item five, public hearings. Item A, Mrs. Donaldson.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 8, Buildings and Building Regulations pertaining to Review of Demolition Permits by the Historic Preservation Commission and Establishment of Public Hearing Procedures.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk read, this bill would amend the city code by establishing a more stringent review requirement and processes associated with proposals to demolish buildings within the city limits. There were a number of public meetings that have been held regarding this issue, including a couple presentations in front of the Public Works and Planning Committee, a city council work session dedicated to the topic, which was held on May 22nd of last year. And it's also been presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, more recently in the month of November. Within your council packets, there are a couple items I'll point out. One is a staff summary of the bill, so I've tried to go through and point out the various features of the bill, and give short descriptions on what the contents are. Two, the staff update with recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, so a bit of a write-up that includes their recommendations and how staff has accommodated that within the bill. And then three, some public comments, so a packet of public correspondence has been received. As mentioned, there was a city council work session on this topic on May 22nd of last year, and staff did a fair amount of research prior to that work session, also since then, regarding this topic. And the primary thing that was found was that, when looking at other cities and how they deal with demolition regulations with respect to historic preservation, so it generally fall into two different categories. No two cities seem to be quite the same, but in general, they fall into these two categories, the regulations do. The first is a general review process, it's largely advisory in nature. This is what the city of Jefferson has within the city code today. A process where proposals to demolish buildings of 50 years or greater is required to go in front of the Historic Preservation Commission, and the commission looks at those, but has no power to prevent the demolition of those structures. The other process that we found was what I've referred to as a certificate of appropriateness process. This is a much stronger process that's largely based on designated historic districts, so most cities that have this process in place have it based on established historic districts across their community. It's a process that often includes not only a review of demolition proposals, but also construction, so actual building modifications of structures within historic districts are often subject to a certificate of appropriateness process. But for the respects of this evening, we're referring to that in the context of the demolition component. And so that process, you know, can actually prevent demolitions, require some sort of approval, either by the Historic Preservation Commission, or if denied, their appeals to the city council. So that's a fairly regular flow of an application through Historic Preservation to the city council for other communities. So what is contained within the bill before you this evening is kind of merged process between those two categories. One involving review, so Historic Preservation Demolition Review, largely built around the existing process where demolitions 50 years, or demolitions of structures 50 years older would be subject to a review process. But that would actually be amended to be applicable to local landmarks, properties located within national register districts, and for structures between 50 and 100 years old. And then a stronger process, which is referred to on the screen as Historic Preservation Demolition Clearance, would be applicable to properties located within local historic districts. The city of Jefferson currently has no local historic districts, but a next step would be to look at establishing more of those. And then also any structures that are older than 100 years. And that process would go in front of the Historic Preservation Commission, and then if denied, the applicant could appear, could appeal to the city council for approval. So this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission at their November meetings. And both bodies recommended approval of the bill that is before you, with a couple of recommended changes. First, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that the 100-year threshold for the clearance process be reduced to 75 years. Also recommended that a separate section regarding penalties, so a stronger penalty section be incorporated within the city code with respects to demolitions. The Historic Preservation Commission voted to, again, recommend approval of the bill with the changes, that the 100-year threshold for clearance be reduced to 50 years, and then also mirroring the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on the penalty section. And so staff have incorporated a penalty section within the bill, so a penalty section specific to demolition. And have left the originally proposed 100-year threshold for clearance within the bill, and obviously leaving that open for the city council to amend if it so chooses. There's a number of review criteria that are built into the bill, and so these are the criteria that demolition proposals would be reviewed upon. It's a tiered structure, and so that there's a line separating the two sections there. So the two items at the top are criteria based on either historic or architectural features of the property or surrounding properties. So the first bullet point item is essentially the national register criteria, so what a property has to meet in order to be considered eligible for the national register, having that same criteria built into the review process for demolition clearance. And then the second bullet point item is basically the impact that removal of a structure would have on an existing streetscape or other historic properties that happened to be nearby. And then the items below the line are other considerations that are not necessarily historic in nature. And so if a property happens to be, have coined the term, a notable structure with respect to the two bullet points above the line, whether it's historic or would have an impact on a streetscape or other properties, then the Historic Preservation Commission would be obligated to look at the items below that line. The deterioration of the structure, where it is located with respect to redevelopment areas, you know, contained within the city's comprehensive plan or other plans. The nature of the surrounding land use, it might be the only residential building in a commercial area. The existence of other similar structures within the city, which is built into the code today. And plans for preservation of fixtures and elements of the building. That last item is an item that has been a high concern of the Historic Preservation Commission, other historic-minded people within the community, to ensure that if a structure is going to be demolished, that any savable elements be preserved. And one other item I'll touch on, and then hand it off to Jamie Abbott for a few remarks. The length of approval of a demolition clearance would be established at one year. And so if approved for a demolition clearance permit, then the property owner would have up to one year to apply for an actual demolition permit. So the two processes are separated. And this is appropriate because a property transfer or some other redevelopment plan or something involving multiple properties might necessitate a property owner achieving a demolition clearance before actually moving forward with plans to redevelop the property and demolish the building. With that, I'll pass it to Jamie, just for a few items regarding some of the demolition statistics.
We have placed on the screen some statistics as for a number of applications reviewed by the Historic Preservation since 2010 to October 31st of 2017. The Historic Preservation in that time has reviewed 119 demolition applications. Of those, nine applications that were received were quote-unquote "recommended for denial", and those addresses are listed up there, along with the approximate age of construction for the property. I would like to note that a couple of the apps did deal with the housing authority, properties owned by the housing authority. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Okay, if the bill was to pass tonight, as is, or amended to the form, I would like to note that there would be a few administrative impacts to the city staff, including a more formalized rules and procedures for the Historic Preservation Commission meetings. This is, you know, to draft, the city staff would draft, and the Historic Preservation Commission would adopt formal rules and procedures, which would mirror a lot like the planning and zoning rules and procedures that are involved. I would like to note here that the Historic Preservation Commission is a certified local government, in which we have to meet some guidelines for the program, including, one of them is criteria of the members on the commission to be of professional background, which, you know, provides a little bit more information and professional experience and background for reviewing matters of historic preservation. Currently, we have an architect, and a lawyer, and others with, and a developer now, that has background with historic preservation. In addition, an administrative assistance support would be needed for the meetings. Currently, the minutes are being kept by a Historic Preservation Commission member, which is appointed as secretary. The more formalized meeting would demand a staff member dedicated to that staff. And in addition, meetings would be moved into the council chambers. Also, a more formalized staff report with a greater emphasis on required findings and research into the history and age of the structure. And that property signposting, excuse me, just be a future purchase of new sign, newer signs, but basically we'll be sharing signs with Planning and Zoning at first. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it back on over to Eric.
Thank you. There's been a lot of comments received from the public regarding the lowering of the year range, and then also recommendations from the Planning, Zoning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission to lower that year range. We've had some statistics shown at the council work session, I think it was taken from Cole County Assessor's data. It's largely, that data's largely built around residential properties, it doesn't have the year range, at least not easily accessible for commercial properties, but I think still gives a pretty good idea of the approximate amount of the city that falls into the different year ranges. So up on the screen is a spread of those year ranges. And so at the 100-year mark, about 6% of the city would fall under that threshold. If lowered to 75, it would be about 21%, and then if lowered further, you know, it approaches 50%. And then, I also have a map that tries to show that. It's a very difficult thing to show, because parcels are different sizes, and so large parcels show up on maps greater. But this is a map, you know, so for your use if you choose, that shows in orange properties that are over 100 years old, and in green, properties that are under 100 years old. And then white properties are properties that we don't have data on, and so as you can see, the core downtown is commercial, and so we don't have that data. But you can see some of the orange areas kind of clustered around the center of the city, a few outliers there. And then I also have a map for 75 years, and so you can see the change there, that it does put a significant number of additional properties into that category, dealing, you know, with the South Side neighborhood, a lot of the stuff along West Main Street, Clark Avenue, Greenberry, et cetera. And so, just a few other comments regarding, because there has been a lot of emphasis on lowering that year range. First, the 100 years that was proposed initially within the bill was based largely on the research done for other communities. I believe it's Independence, Missouri, that really had the best example, although not completely comparable to, I think, what we were after. They had a lot of established historic districts, and we do not. And so the 100 years, I think, was really a safety net, so to speak, in order to catch other structures that are not located within historic districts for them, okay? And so, you know, transfer that to Jefferson City, and that year range seems to be more important than the local historic districts. And so you can see by this map that I think that year range would put this demolition protection in place for a significant number of the historic areas of the community, you know, if lowered to, you know, for example, 75 years. But it is not what other communities have traditionally done. Other communities focuses have largely been on historic districts with this safety net in place to catch other structures that happen to not be located in historic districts. So I'll just put that out there for your knowledge as you consider this bill. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening up the public hearing.
Any questions at this time from council? Councilman Mahalovich?
What is the percentage, meaning in terms of numbers? Like 6% of the housing stock would be approximately, how many houses? For that, above.
And I apologize, I printed that off, and I did not bring it to the meeting, it's literally sent in on a printer downstairs.
Jamie may have that, was there a question over here?
No.
Okay.
18,000 in the city right now? In the city, 18. About 18,000 residential units are in the city, so 6% of that is... I was gonna say about 1,000, and so, and that sounds about right. So at 75 years, it sounds like it'd be about 3,000, and that's residential, largely single-family residential. So commercial on top of that would be an addition.
I'd also like to add that that is the assessor's data, and having worked with that for the last 11 years, once a property gets so old, they just don't even have the data. So, a lot of properties, I don't know the exact... So a lot of properties, I don't know the exact amount, actually had no year built in the data file. So those numbers may be off a little bit. I would say there's probably more houses older than newer.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for Bill 2017-105. And if anyone would like to speak on that bill, you don't have to sign up since it's a public hearing, but I am going to start with a couple of people that did sign up here. Mr. Steve Byley, if you would like to come forward. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. It's good to be here. It was nice to see Phyllis here. When I was first elected to the council, 1985, she was the city clerk. Did an excellent job.
Wow, and it's always nice to have a council member returning, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd just like to speak in favor of this bill. I hope you do pass it. It's been a very long and meticulous process for us. We started working on this as I was president of the Historic City of Jefferson, I think about four years ago, maybe, maybe a little more than that. And we started putting together some ideas that we thought might be good. We put them into a bill, actually worked with an attorney to try to get it in good shape, and then brought it forth to the city for consideration. And it has gone through all kinds of processes that you have here, which are good. The Historic Preservation Commission looked at it very closely and then decided some changes should be made. In fact, they wanted to, and they did, go step-by-step, very meticulous process, line by line, through that bill. And they did their own research, came up with their own bill, and that's what kind of advanced then from that point to, from the commission to the city council. And there have been a number of public hearings, as Eric mentioned. And I think what was probably one of the most significant things that happened was coming before your committee, the Public Works and Planning Committee. And then that committee, of course, suggested, hey, okay, we've got this bill, we think it's in pretty good shape, now let's send it back to two city commissions for further review and comment. And so that was done, back to the HPC again, which again had looked at it in great depth before that. And then to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was a different approach. That had not been done before. And of course, HPC is very preservation-oriented, which is great, but planning and zoning, not so much. They don't really deal with preservation issues, so it was new to them. And of course, they represent a broad cross-section of the community. I think there's somebody from every ward on the Planning and Zoning Commission, maybe two people, I'm not sure. And of course, they met here and voted, I think it was seven to one, to support this bill. But they had some amendments that they suggested, and as did the HPC. And I was pleasantly surprised to see, A, that Planning and Zoning Commission supported it, and they suggested lowering the threshold from 100 years to 75 years. Now, the thing about the threshold is, it's been 50 years for a long time. It's been 50 years at the federal level, at the state level, and at the local level here for 30 years. So when we're making change here and going from 50 to 100 or to 75, that's a big change. So as a preservationist myself, I would prefer to see it stay at 50 years. That's the way it is across the country, and that makes great sense. However, as a practical person and knowing that there are a lot of folks who have opinions about this, and P&amp;Z suggested going to 75, I think 75 would be a good compromise position. I think it's, you know, obviously, it's right in the middle between 50 and 100. HPC, of course, they dug in their heels and they said, no, it's got to be 50. So I understand that, and I support that, but I can also understand the need to compromise and find a middle ground that perhaps would work for everybody. And so I would encourage you to, you know, not only pass this bill tonight, but to amend it first to go with a 75-year threshold. I think that would be workable. So, you know, it's been a long process, and I'm glad to see we've gotten to this point. I think overall, it's got good support within the community and among those two bodies in particular, that you entrusted, that you said, let's get their opinion, let's get their thoughts and see what amendments they have. They both supported it, and those are folks that I know you rely on. So I urge you to approve that, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Byley. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Tammy Bestian sign up. Welcome.
My name is Tammy Bestian. I reside at 728 Deer Creek Road, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic City of Jefferson, of which I am president and whose office location is 108 West Atchison Street. There has been much discussion and research regarding what has been deemed the Historic Preservation Ordinance over the last three to four years. It has, the current version, the bill before you, has the support of the city staff that are involved with this issue. It has the support of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it has the support of the Historic Preservation Commission, with some suggested changes to that. It is the hope of myself and the Historic City of Jefferson that you will pass this bill tonight for the sake of preserving the important buildings that still remain standing in Jefferson City. The capital city deserves to have architecture in place that reminds us of the families, the craftsmanship, and the endurance of those who came before us, reflections of this community's history and heritage. We continue to suggest two changes for the bill that has been presented, that the threshold for consideration for demolition clearance be changed from 100 years to 75 years to give a layer of protection to additional historically and architecturally significant buildings, which as Eric showed on the map, would indeed encompass more of these historic buildings that cannot be replaced. And that the financial penalty for those who demolish unlawfully be raised from $500 to $1,000 plus possible jail time. We would greatly appreciate your passage of this bill and certainly appreciate the time, consideration, and interest that each of you have given to this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bestian. Any questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak during the public hearing portion here of 2017-105? Anyone else? Okay, all right. We do have one more? Welcome.
Good evening. Arturo Hernandez, 1616 Bunker Hill Road here in Jefferson City. I'm the chair, current chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'd like to just approach you one last time in regards to the commission's position on the specific 50 years threshold. This is not about demolition. I know it's a demolition ordinance, but it's not about demolition. The commissioners at the Historic Preservation Commission have never thought of this as a demolition ordinance. This is a preservation ordinance. This is something to preserve the buildings and to keep them from falling into further unknown statuses. Two days ago, my 50-year, and I say my, and I apologize, I don't mean to be selfish, the 50-year threshold went from 1966 or 1967 to 1968. That year changes every year. Every year, we get one year older, and these houses and properties and buildings become one year older. So the difference between 50 and 75 is 1943 and 1968. It's not that big of a difference. The National Register Criteria, we've been using that for four years, five years, since I've been on the commission. We've always used the National Register Criteria to determine whether these buildings and properties should be demolished or should remain standing. Ms. Abbott listed the nine denial recommendations, and I apologize, but I don't have the actual numbers. I believe all nine of those buildings are no longer here because our recommendation didn't mean anything. It was just, we thought these are important historic properties, and that was nice. It was just a box that some property owner, and I am a property owner, just checked off the box. But these houses, these properties are no longer here. And that's a shame. I don't have anything else to say. 50 years is what we've been working with. 50 years is, like Mr. Byley said, 50 years is what we've been using for 30 years. No one complained when we were saying 50 years and it didn't matter. Nobody said anything. But now it's just too much? I will tell you what happened at the meeting last month. I was the only one who said 50 years. We were going to recommend 75, just like the other commission. And I said, I couldn't do that in good faith because that's not my job. I haven't been appointed to this position to capitulate, to make the people happy. My job is to preserve these structures. And I said, if we're going to vote, just know that I am going to vote no. And I let everybody know that beforehand. And all the other commissioners said, well, we didn't really like that either. We don't like the 75 years because it's not what we've dealt with. I know a number of you have been on the commission and have very familiar feelings about the 50-year, or know about the 50-year threshold. Something we've always worked with. A compromise doesn't benefit the buildings. It doesn't benefit our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. And thank you for chairing the commission as well. Anyone else here this evening to speak on the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion, and we will take up 2017-105. Is there any council discussion or deliberation? Councilwoman Ward?
I have a question for city staff. If you can further explain why you brought forth P&amp;Z's recommendation to increase the fine, but not their recommendation to lower the years? I mean, I understand you looked at a model, you looked at different models, but in particular And I'm wondering why that has so much weight? If you're just not supportive of it from a staff standpoint or a legal standpoint, and I might have to have legal weigh-in on that. But I think 75 would be, you know, a good give and take to go to.
From a staff perspective, I don't believe that there's a strong preference one way or another. I think that year threshold does firmly sit with the council. The 100 years was put in the initial bill, again, largely because it came from what we thought was the best example, which happened to be Independence. You know, the name of the city's probably less important than the fact that it's just a good example, a good threshold to serve as, again, I'll use the term "safety net" to catch those other structures. Jefferson City is not very comparable to Independence, not in terms of cities and not in terms of where we sit with historic preservation, so I was, you know, end the comparisons there. The map that I showed, you know, if you ask someone to point at the historic areas of Jefferson City, you might end up with a very similar type of map. And so a 75-year threshold would seem to protect a lot of the important areas. If you're looking for a staff recommendation, I think that what we'd recommend is that the focus should be on historic districts. We just don't have any yet to build this demolition ordinance off of. There's other areas that, you know, would, you know, the community would probably like to see a certificate of appropriateness process for some of these historic areas to ensure that construction projects are, you know, are suitable, you know, that blend into the character of the historic neighborhood. Again, those are largely built around historic districts in other communities, and so we're really starting from scratch in that regard. So the lack of the districts, I think, has really focused, pushed the focus toward that year range. And I think the year range would accomplish, you know, preserving a lot of the community and hopefully give us some time to put together some historic districts and expand the efforts.
If I may also address one of your questions about why there's two-year periods. I recall the city councillor, Mr. Moleman, said that if it's citywide, it's much more defendable if you have a higher year range. And that way, through the appeal process, if it is appealed from the Historic Preservation Commission to the city council, that's more defensible, and I defer to Mr. Wolford to expand or verify my recollection.
Mr. Wolford?
I would agree with Director Sanders on that. When it's, when we're looking at it through a citywide perspective rather than with historic districts, which we do concur with Mr. Barron, we believe that is probably the most appropriate approach. We just don't have any in place at this time. A higher age range is less inclusive, whereas looking at the other end of the spectrum, 50 years, the law department believes is overly inclusive and would not be justified and would put us in a less defensible position. I mean, that would encompass 48% of the residential properties in the city of Jefferson, not to mention the commercial properties of which the age ranges aren't displayed by Mr. Barron's data.
Thank you. Any further questions or deliberation from council? Okay. So, and is everyone clear on which version and what's in the bill and the years and everything? I know there's been several years talked about, so, okay. Councilman Hesse?
For clarity, and the fine changes, that's included in the bill before us, correct? Or not?
Yes, the fine range, and I don't know, I don't think I answered Councilwoman Ward's question with that regard. We did consult with the original sponsor, Councilman Henry, before doing anything. Without there being consensus, you know, from planning, zoning, historic preservation, felt it more appropriate to keep what was presented to the Public Works and Planning Commission, that 100-year range, knowing that it would be an item of discussion at the council level. The penalty section, they did concur. It was incorporated into the bill. It would basically put the penalty at $1,000 and 180 days in jail, so either the fine days in jail or both for people that violate the demolition or demolish without a permit.
Councilman Hesse?
Can I ask a follow-up? Mr. Barron, I think some of the comments here tonight left, can leave you with the implication that, or the perception, I should say, that we're moving from 50 years now on some action to 70, or to 100 per se. Really, the HPC still has review authority for anything over 50 years, correct? 50 to 99. What we're adding, if we approve the bill as presented, is teeth to their decision if the structure's 100 years or older, is in one of these local historic districts, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So, we're not necessarily taking away any authority that the HPC has currently. We're giving them increased authority on those two instances, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilwoman Ward?
And with that review process of fifty and older, is there still the sixty-day table option if they didn't?
Actually, that was increased slightly to seventy-five days, a, a minor item there, and that's basically to ensure that, that it hits two meetings and, and actually expand for six, seventy-five days or when the second meeting passes, one of the two, so.
And Mr. Barron, would you clarify the number of years that is before the council in this particular bill at this time?
The bill sets the clearance process at one hundred years.
So, one hundred is in this bill, so it's not, it is not the seventy-five?
Is within the bill. Correct.
Councilman Schreiber?
Now, under number two there, where it says older than one hundred years, ours says one hundred years, not older than one hundred years, is that correct? Model number two, it says older than one hundred years. Well, that means that a hundred years would have to be actually older than one hundred years, the way I read it correctly, if I am.
Yeah, I think I, I personally would interpret that at one hundred years to the day. I defer to the law department if they had any other thoughts.
Okay. Yeah, well, basically, that's what.
Although the exact day that a structure becomes complete would probably be a very difficult thing to find, but.
I prefer the seventy-five myself, personally.
And speaking of the numbers, I know there's been a lot of them, a lot of years talked about this evening, so the, what planning and zoning suggested was seventy-five, correct?
Uh, correct. That was what they, they voted that recommendation be forwarded to the council, that it be reduced from one hundred seventy-five.
And then the council would make that determination of what that year should be. So, their, their recommendation is seventy-five. What's on the table currently is a hundred.
Correct.
Councilman Hesse?
I guess not to repeat everything I said a couple meeting, or, or the last meeting, but just, I feel like we went through a pretty lengthy process to get to this point. I think there's been a lot of give back and forth between the interested parties, and it's not a perfect policy, but I, and I think that those opposed to it, or those that have concerns would say that, those who are supportive of this direction would also share that as well. I think, I appreciate the report tonight from staff, and I think you have laid out a path for us to take. And, and one could look at that to say, if we pass a hundred years tonight, I think the path you're laying out is to say that these local historic districts are a better means maybe long-term for us protecting areas. And the charge would be then for staff and those interested in the community, you know, th, those areas, so start moving that direction. And it could be that we don't gain traction in a year or two or three on these districts. This policy can be revisited to lower that threshold. It's not as though we've etched this in stone tonight and what's said is done. And so realistically, the best way to protect these historic areas really is the, the establishment, right, of a local historic district, because it does so much more than just protect the demolition of a building. It can also protect the architecture and redevelopment and certain things within that district. I feel like we came out of Public Works with this proposal, you know, we asked for a little bit more guidance and input, but we had a lot of input to get us to the hundred years. I mean, the, the increase in the fines, a, a solid recommendation. Not, not to like, part of me just says, "Let's pass what we have to get this thing started, put something in place, and then continue to work on all of these issues that have come up." If the decision has to be revisited to lower that threshold, so be it. I think that's what we're here to do. But let's certainly not start tinkering with, let's not end up failing this proposal tonight, I guess is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Any further, Councilman Graham?
Yes, if council, if staff could go back to the, to the map to help me to really understand the two, the difference between the, the hundred and the seventy-five, because I have some concern with the hundred year opposed to the seventy-five year. So, if you could just give me those, the areas that seventy-five would impact compared to the hundred, because that's, that's the hundred.
Yep, so blinking between the two.
Right.
You can see the impact.
I don't want to split hairs on some of these things, because you pick numbers that are somewhat arbitrary to a certain extent. Not that you have this data at your hands, but I really, what's it look like at eighty-five or eighty-seven? Like, you know, how many of those are added within, you know, ninety and up or something? You understand what I'm saying? Like, again, that, that seventy-five, I mean, you have that range to a certain extent, but I wonder with that fifteen percent of the seventy-five to a hundred, where it tends to be within that spectrum of twenty-five years?
And so, if you look at the, the fifty to seventy-five-year range with there being twenty-seven percent of, of the structures in that category, for twenty-five years, it's roughly, roughly one percent per year that would graduate into a seventy-five-year or older category every year, roughly. And so it start at twenty-one percent today and then, and then build over time. Uh, there, you know, one reason, Mr. Mahalovich, that they didn't put the numbers on the screen is because they know they're inaccurate. There's so many structures that we don't have the data for, the, the numbers would have been inaccurate, so the percentages are, are, you know, are just kind of from a representative sample for the data that we do have, that the assessor's department does have. With regards to, to the year range, I, I'm not as astute of a historian as, as many in this community. I have a general sense that maybe there was a building boom during the twenties, and during the thirties, probably not so much, and then during the war, probably not so much, and then after the war, quite a building boom. And so, you know, the, the threshold between those building booms, you know, may not be as important as the stuff that falls, you know, immediately before and, and after that building boom. If, if that adds any clarity or cloudiness.
Thank you, because I know the years, oh, Councilman Mahalovich?
Councilman Hesse, I kind of interpreted what he was saying just slightly different. We'd taken the recommendations from Independence at a hundred years because that's what they had, yet if I got his testimony correctly, they also had a lot of historic districts, so they were somewhat already protected throughout the city. And so a hundred was appropriate for them. And it would probably be more appropriate for us in the future, because we have, I don't know how many homes in this city protected through a historic district right now. Capitol Avenue?
Zero, just Capitol Avenue.
Right. Okay, so, the difference is, they have those elements in place and we don't. So, to say, it may be more critical, we need the less years now, and then back it off to a hundred years, once we get the districts solidified, that would be maybe an approach. But I also agree with you that let's get something passed here, and I don't know that, I don't know that seventy-five will pass. If I thought it would, I would make that motion right now.
Councilman Prather?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Councilman Hesse also on the hundred years, just because that's what staff brought to us. And what keeps coming back to me is what's legally defensible. I mean, do, do you want us to put us in a precarious situation where we don't know for sure if it's actually gonna hold up if we do fifty or seventy-five? Hundred sounds a little bit more reasonable to me, and if we find out that we do a historical district or for another reason, we can enter it back, or scale it back to seventy-five, I'd be all for that. But right now, I'm just, for those reasons, I'm a little more comfortable with the hundred.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
You know, I have the same, same information as everybody else, but I'm coming to a different conclusion. I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time wrangling with this information, because we have the opportunity to have historical districts, and we focused on this, this bill so much, and, and instead of focusing on, on historical districts. I thought, I thought we also had the, I guess I'm sort of making a comment as well, I thought we also had the South Side. Has that not been a historical district yet?
Uh, no, there's the, the South Side Neighborhood Plan that is an adopted component and does have some overlay recommendations. And so it is something that could be pursued.
So, overall, I, I think, I, I'm just concerned that a hundred years isn't even tight enough. We're gonna end up, we're gonna end up litigating this stuff in court and spending a lot of money litigating this stuff, when we could instead take and get historical districts and spend our money, or spend our time wisely getting historical districts. I also think there's gonna be a burden on our, on our people of Jefferson City. I just, but by creating this, I, I think, I think we need to go the different route and get, and, and go the route of historical districts. I think that's the way to go.
Any further deliberation? Okay. Seeing none, we will take up 2017-105. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Graham? Henry? Hesse?
Are we voting? Did you vote?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we're, we're doing a roll call.
Are we reading the bill?
Didn't, we did, we read, we read the bill already, so, so we're taking up now, this is the vote for 2017-105. So, is council clear on what, on everything?
He was up late.
Okay.
She started reading through names, and I'm like, got to Hesse, I'm like, okay.
I thought you were abstaining from voting.
Oh, no.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll start over.
We'll start over. Okay, Graham?
No.
Henry? Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
No.
Uh, bill passes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, Fitzwater, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm an aye.
I guess I stayed up late, too. Thank you.
See, that's what I was waiting on, Fitzwater to go first. Because I'm like, this is the first bill that we're voting on, so Fitzwater goes first.
Oh, that, that is true. All right. So, bill passes. I do want to thank staff for the extensive information that they brought to council for this, and also Planning and Zoning, Historic Preservation Commission, and, and the historic groups in town as well, and at least it's a step in the right direction. I think looking at, at encouraging the historic districts is also important, and looking at how other communities are successful with that, we, we need to, to do that. So, thank you to everybody. Item B, we have Bill 2017-106.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter Seventeen, Licenses, Taxation, and Miscellaneous Business Regulations in Chapter Thirty-five, the Zoning Code pertaining to short-term rental of a residence or lodging room.
And this would be Eric Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would amend two different chapters of the city code, both dealing with, or dealing with the topic of short-term rentals. And so Chapter Thirty-five, the zoning code, regarding the, the use and location where such short-term rentals could be located. Also, Chapter Seventeen, business regulations, dealing with how such uses are licensed and also how lodging taxes apply to, to them. And so first, to, to try to give a definition of what a short-term rental is. A short-term rental is a, a residential use. It's where a property owner takes an existing residence and rents out the residence, either the whole residence or perhaps part of the residence. The more common type of use is where a property owner would rent an entire house or something to that effect, would place it usually this day and age on, on websites such as Airbnb, where, where an entire home would be offered for rent by the night. But sometimes, instead of a whole house, it is only a portion of a house, a residence that is, is offered for rent, such as a single bedroom. Or what is very common is perhaps the lower level of a, of a residence. And what is, is less common but still out there is renting out something as small as a couch for, for someone to sleep on in a night. But the, the short-term rental is, is dealing with residential uses, existing residences that are being offered for rent on a, on a commercial basis. And so this bill would regulate those. Currently, they are prohibited by the zoning code, at least in, in single-family and residential districts, because they are a commercial use. And so the zoning code has a, has a clear separation between commercial and residential uses, and this, this currently falls into a category of being prohibited. This bill would allow those uses within residential districts as a special exception use, meaning that a special exception permit would be necessary for a property owner in order to engage in that type of, of activity, renting out their residence. And then as a permitted use in commercial districts, there are many residential units located within areas that are zoned commercial. For example, downtown lofts, and some apartment buildings are located within, in commercial districts and, and some residential homes. And this bill would then also establish specific use standards or special requirements for that short-term rental use within the zoning code. So I have a list of those up on the screen. First, that any special exception permits, if, if they were required, would be issued in the name of a property owner. And so if, so, so the property owner and, and their character could be an item of consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ultimately the city council, before issuing a special exception permit for them to engage in that use. Also, use of accessory structures would not be permitted, such as garages or other structures located in a rear yard. The number of guests would be regulated in order to be comparable to what is allowed within an existing residence. Basically, five people, or as many people as are related by blood, blood or marriage. Signage would be limited to being only a single small sign. Again, these are residential areas and residential structures, so that they, there would be only a small sign to identify that, that use. Parties and receptions would not be permitted. There'd be a parking requirement to, to make sure that the guests have proper parking. And then, you know, the, the, the structure would need to maintain its residential appearance. And then also, that property that this short-term rental use would be subject to any applicable taxes and licensing requirements, which I'll get to in a moment, and any building and fire code requirements, which are built into existing building and fire codes, so they'd, they'd be subject to, to existing codes with, with respect to fire and building inspections. And so as mentioned, the, the bill amends Chapter Seventeen as well, dealing with business licensing, taxation, and other miscellaneous business regulations. The amendment would add short-term rentals within the definition of hotels and motels, and so they, they would, would fall into the same definition category. Would reduce the threshold for lodging tax from three rooms to one room. So currently, any hotels or bed and breakfasts that have three or more rooms for rent are subject to the lodging tax. That would be reduced to a single room, so that anyone engaging in a short-term rental would, would, would be subject to that tax. And then also would require business licenses for short, short-term rental businesses. So if a property owner decides to offer their, their home, you know, a home up, up for short-term rental, they would be expected to obtain a business license, as well as any other zoning requirements, such as a special exception permit, before engaging in that I believe that's all I have. It was recommended for approval, the zoning code amendments were recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the amendments to Chapter Seventeen were recommended for approval by the Finance Department. I defer to Margie on that. I'd be hap, be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions of council this time? Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, under, under the restrictions that were up there, number five, where it says parties and receptions not permitted, does that mean if, if the homeowner lives there and... there and is also renting a room, that the homeowner themselves cannot have a party or reception? How do we, how do we distinguish that so that if there's some type of enforcement necessary, you know?
Mm-hmm.
That can be very confusing, I would think.
It, it is, it is somewhat vague, um, and, uh, I think on purpose Ryan gave a very good description of, um, you know, what the, the police department, how it is they, you know, they, they come to, to enforce such things. Uh, it's, um, is, is probably important not to have it, uh, too clearly defined in terms of, of what a party or reception is, uh, so that, you know, people do not, um, uh, purposefully work in order to, to go right up to that line of, of where that definition ends. Uh, but at the same time, it's important to have in there in order to, to provide some protection, uh, for, for surrounding residential areas if it's very clear that, that a, a property's being used for, uh, for, uh, a use such as that, that, that there's a method for, um, uh, uh, you know, enforcing, enforcing that. Uh, if, you know, we find that, uh, that, that language is, is not clear enough as it's written into the, the council bill, we could always come back and, and amend it at a future date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will open the public hearing portion for Bill 2017-106. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that bill? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion for, uh, and we will take up Bill 2017-106. Any council deliberation or discussion? Councilman Hussey?
I just have a question for Mr. Barron, just to follow up on Councilman Schreiber's, uh, addressing the, the, the party reception piece. Would, would staff anticipate this is, that would be more of a complaint-driven, um, issue? I mean, it's not as though staff is gonna have the 15 Airbnb venues in Jefferson City and patrol them to see if they're having parties, right?
I, I do believe it would likely be complaint-driven. Um, also, I think the, uh, the method of enforcement would be a revocation of either their, their business license or their special exception permit, whatever is, is most applicable and the, the best route. And so it's, you know, continuation, so if, you know, if a party occurs, you know, very easy to warn them. If it continues to occur, it's very easy to, to, uh, proceed with procedures to revoke.
And so, I, yeah, I, I would, I would anticipate that language, maybe it won't be an issue, maybe it's not an issue elsewhere. I, what, what I'm foreseeing is that you do have some neighbors in the area that are somewhat uncomfortable with this taking place in a residence in their community of, and so they will call in anything that looks like a party or reception, just to be a nuisance, basically, try to get that homeowner, property owner to no longer rent out their space. And so I'm just...
Well, I, I referred to the police department and I, that was probably improper. This is a zoning code issue and so it would really need to be documented, um, by, you know, by, by the, the Planning and Protective Services Department. However, the use would still be subject to noise regulations and so, and the police department is, is the, you know, the responsible entity for, for enforcing that. And so if there is a noise issue, um, that is very valid and that the police department, my understanding, has, has the, the method to measure that and determine compliance or not. And please correct me if I'm, if I'm incorrect.
And then just to follow up very quickly on the parking requirements, um, I'm assuming those match other language that we have or they're not considered to be burdensome to, to, to a homeowner that they wish to rent out their space.
It, it, it is a very small issue, however, it can be burdensome. Um, for renting out an entire home, um, basically you'd have the same parking requirement as, as a normal residence, so that should not be an issue. When renting out a room within a home, you basically need one additional parking spot in order to accommodate that additional person, you know, additional vehicle. And so that, I would view as probably being the more likely burden.
And so how do we define, for, for instance, if, if somebody has a, 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 a double-wide driveway, whatever that's called, two-car driveway, and maybe a garage or something like that, do we define, do we go out and kinda define that you can fit this many cars in this or is that defined as two parking spaces?
So, the, the staff interpretation over the years has been that a double-stacked driveway counts as two spaces for that home.
Regardless of the length of that drive?
Um, yeah, I think so. Uh, of course, the requirement's only two spaces, so that, you know, a, a, you know, a, a third car wouldn't matter. And in the case of a visiting guest, though, you really need a, a third spot that is independent from that double-stacked situation. And so I would interpret it to mean that you need, you know, three spots, two of which can be double-stacked.
And also, Mr. Barron, I'm sure, uh, as you've been, uh, working on this ordinance, that you've been working along with the Convention and Visitors Bureau and since the lodging tax piece is addressed, that, that the Convention and Visitor, Visitors Bureau doesn't have any concerns with this?
Uh, they, they have participated in, in some discussions with staff, uh, attended Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, meetings regarding the subject. Um, I forget his name, but the, the president of the, the association did give some comments. Uh, I believe that's within the, the materials within your pack. But, um, uh, regarding that, it feels that it's important that these short-term rentals be subject to the same rules as, as hotel rooms, basically. Um, not only for the safety of the, the guests that are staying there, uh, but also for the, the fairness in terms of, of paying their fair share of tax, and so.
Thank you, and we appreciate having Mrs. Gillespie here as well from the CVB. So, all right, thank you. Any further, uh, questions or deliberation? Councilman Schreiber?
I'm sorry, but back to number five again. Actually, you know, when we say would, we would defer back to the police, I, I hate to put them in that, that position if we don't have it a little more clearly defined. Um, I, I just think that that could be a, a real problem, particularly if you had a neighbor that, that didn't like a neighbor that happened to be the little old lady that was renting the room, um, and she was having, somebody was having a birthday party for her, you know, and police have spent so much time on so many calls the way it is, I, I see that as being a, a, a potential, a potential issue for them. I really do.
And, and I do believe I mistook, misspoke that no, that would not be a police department issue. Um, if, if there were, were parties that were occurring at a residence, I believe that it would be the Department of Planning and Protective Services that would need to follow up on that. However, if there's a noise issue at a residence, uh, the police department could, could follow up on that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Any further deliberation? Okay, uh, seeing none, um, roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Bill passes. Okay. So, item six, appointments by the mayor, there are none. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and not invited guests, there are none. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Let's start by wishing everyone a very happy new year and happy 2018. Be sure to check our meeting calendar, JeffersonCityMo.gov for meeting dates and schedules because after the holidays and the first of the year, there are some changes, so be sure to, to check out that calendar. And, um, as we start off the new year, I like to reflect on a great 2017 and looking ahead to the New Year's resolutions for 2018. If you saw today's front-page News Tribune, you know what some of the New Year's resolutions that I mentioned during that interview included the Missouri State Penitentiary redevelopment. Now that we have that, uh, bill signed in, in 17, we can start working on that progress in 18. And then also, uh, the potential conference or civic center that would go along with that. Also mentioned Capital Avenue and with the streetscape looking so great in 2017, now looking forward to the legal process to get some of those homes, um, after they've been in such disrepair, hoping to see that, uh, positive movement in the legal process on Capital Avenue. Also Riverfront Access and getting that moving forward. And then, uh, the downtown parking garage, I know, which was mentioned, I believe, at the last council meeting and looking at progress there. So, a lot of exciting projects on the horizon for the new year, so appreciate council and all of their hard work and effort and, and look forward to a, a great year for Jefferson City. And who knows what the mayor's New Year's resolution is? I thought you were gonna do it, Hussey. Buckle up, phone down? I saw, I saw your thumbs kinda... New Year's resolution is buckle up, phone down, and just reminding everybody that I hope everybody in Jefferson City will take up that, that resolution, not to be texting while driving or whatever kind of, uh, uh, work on their phone should not be done. And, and I know with Missouri being one of, I believe, four states that allows, uh, texting and driving for drivers over 21, I do hope that our state legislature would, would, um, definitely correct that and, and it's really unacceptable in any form or fashion to be texting and, and driving at any age. So, um, buckle up, phone down every time. That's my New Year's resolution for all of Jefferson City and really hopefully all of Missouri, cause I don't think any of us wanna be on the road with another driver that's doing that while they're driving. So, that's my, uh, New Year's resolution for everyone and I will turn it over to council. Any announcements, uh, this evening? Councilman Mahalovich?
Um, due to, uh, lack of items to be discussed and, uh, audit, we are canceling the finance meeting. Uh, but we do have good news from the, uh, Finance Department in regard to the year-end, um, sales projec, uh, sales came in at, uh, above budget, so we, uh, we met our goal and, uh, a little bit more. Is that correct? Do you have anything else to add to year-end? Very good. Congratulations on good work budgeting by all.
That's good news. Thank you.
And, uh, those packets will be on, in your packets. They'll be mailed out, um, even though we're not having the meeting.
Yeah, they, they may not be mailed out, um, the week of the audit, but it would be soon, soon after that.
Great. Thank you. Uh, any other council, uh, announcements? Um, and I did wanna mention too, I wanted to take a moment just to thank staff, especially Public Safety, Police, and Fire and all that they're doing, especially with the extreme cold conditions. I know it's tough on them sometimes, probably to be out and about and reminding everyone, I'm sure, to stay safe, uh, during this extreme cold. So, pre, I really appreciate Police and Fire and also wanna mention, of course, Public Works that's out there as we have ice or different conditions and now outworking the, the roads and working our, our city. So appreciate all of the departments and, and code enforcement, everybody that's out there helping. And I wanna do a quick thank you to Parks for the, uh, all the work they've done with the, the mayor's Christmas tree. I was just there last night, in fact, and there were still people there taking pictures in front of the tree, I mean, other than me. I was taking pictures, but there were other families and it was really neat to just see, uh, children and people, even in this extreme cold, they were still driving up and, and taking pictures with that. So I think Parks did a fantastic job on that this year. So thank you to everyone. And then also, uh, we have an announcement, item A, the affirmative, uh, for, furthering fair housing citizen engagement, Mr. Sanders.
Yes, that's a quite a tongue twister.
Yes.
Um, part of our community development block program includes affirmating, affirmatively furthering fair housing program. Uh, the goal is to help ensure that all of our neighborhoods in the communities are places of opportunity with fair housing available. Um, we have, uh, two meetings coming up, tomorrow and Thursday. Tomorrow's meeting is here in the council chambers, four to six. Uh, the meeting, uh, on Thursday is at the Dorothy Pack Community Center, uh, that's also four to six. And, uh, we also have an online survey, and if you've looked at the News Tribune, you saw Planning and Protective Services' first full-page ad. We were excited about that. That was a surprise to me when I came in. I was like, who paid for that? But, um, I'd like to invite, uh, the community members, uh, to either fill out the survey or come to one of these two meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions or announcements? All right. Item nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We have nobody signed up. Item 10, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, Bills Introduced, 2017-107.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $60,000 agreement with Linda and Jean Wiseman for the purchase of land for a sanitary sewer wet weather storage facility.
Mr. Bangy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this bill would authorize the purchase of 1.8 acres of property, uh, that we would, that our sewer division would use, uh, to build some underground storage tanks, essentially that would store, uh, wet weather flows. And so when it rains, we typically have more water in our sewer system than that particular sewer system can handle. And so these tanks would store that and allow it to release slowly once the rain had stopped. And so then that would proceed over to our treatment plant. So, this just allows, uh, the area for those storage tanks to be placed. Ultimately, it would save us, um, probably about 1.2 million dollars of further upgrades downstream, um, that we would need to do if we didn't build these, these tanks.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Item 2017-108.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adding a new article governing the use of electrical power in the downtown electrical service area.
Uh, Mr. Bangy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, this basically, um, is a bill that would, uh, set up a rate structure for the use of the electrical services that we've placed on Capital Avenue and then will be placing on, um, High Street, uh, this year. And so ultimately, what we have on Capital Avenue is, at every light pole, there's the ability of, uh, have, there's a separate 20-amp circuit at each one of those poles. In the downtown situation, we'll have, uh, three separate areas where there's six plugs each for vendors and various folks who might want to use, uh, the electrical power. And so, the bill just sets up a, a, a fee schedule for what that would cost in order for the city to turn that on. Um, and, and, uh, basically that is a, a schedule of cost based on how many ampere, how many amps of power that you wanna draw from the system. And so that would be part of a permit process, so you wouldn't, we wouldn't do that for an individual, but for a festival or whatever, we would receive a permit that they would want X number of outlets turned on. We would turn those on, uh, and then the charges would be handled through the permit process.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. 2017-109.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19-401 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the modification of speed limits associated with highways 50, 54, and 63 to parallel Missouri Department of Transportation.
Mr. Bangy?
Thank you. Um, so again, the, uh, with the changes that happened at Lafayette Street and various, uh, other activities that MoDOT has undertaken in the area, uh, they have gone and changed some of the speed limits on the state highways. And so, we also have, um, ordinances concerning those speed limits so that our officers can write speeding tickets or other enforcement actions on those sections of road. And so what this, uh, bill does is actually change those so they mirror what MoDOT has already signed on the roadways.
Any questions? Councilman Hussey?
Did MoDOT go up in speed?
Um, in the instance, uh, if you were going, uh, eastbound on Highway 5063, leaving Monroe Street, going towards Clark, that, that did, the, the speed limit was increased from, I believe, 45 to 55 through that area.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. 2017-110.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning property addressed as 3328 Bennett Lane from RU Rural to PUD Planned Unit Development. Approval of a preliminary and final PUD plan for said property and accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Woodland Montessori School Subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders?
Mr. Barron's gonna address this.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first, to, to orient you to the location of this property. Uh, up on the screen is a location and zoning map for the area. It deals with a portion of the former Rickman Center property, which is a very large tract of land. Uh, you can see, uh, toward the, the bottom center of the screen is the, uh, the Rickman Center Conference Center, which, um, has, has been converted into a, um, uh, a, a residential use associated with, um, oh dang it, the, um, um, homeless youth. Halo Foundation, thank you. Uh, this bill, uh, deals with the property outlined in blue, uh, there. Uh, the Rickman Center property is currently zoned in RU, a rural district, and, uh, the bill would rezone, uh, the portion of the property outlined in blue there, uh, from rural to, uh, a PUD, a Planned Unit Development District. Uh, you'll note that the yellow line going through the map is the city limit line, so a portion of this blue property is located in, in unincorporated Cole County. The, the portion there, uh, we, we refer to it as a flagpole of a flag lot, uh, just a strip of land along a, a private, uh, lane, driveway, um, would, would serve as obtaining a private lane, driveway, would serve as obtaining street access for the property so that it would have dedicated a street frontage. The bill would also put in place a preliminary and final PUD plan for the property. Here is an aerial photo of the building, so it is a former church building with an existing parking lot around it. The PUD plan would establish a use, converting that church building to a daycare or Montessori school. So it's actually a Montessori school that would occupy it, and the zoning code would define that as a daycare. And so the building has existing parking. It would be probably minor internal modifications to the building in order to accomplish that use. And then also a subdivision plat in order to divide that property off from the rest of the former Rickman Center so that it could be transferred to the new owner. And so the subdivision plat is a one-lot subdivision that would accommodate that transfer. As mentioned, a portion of the property is located in unincorporated Cole County. The Cole County Department of Planning or Public Works, their planner, has put a stamp that the subdivision is exempt from Cole County subdivision regulations, as is the normal procedure, as it does not involve subdividing any of the property outside or in the county. It's just merely a lot that happens to straddle the line. This item was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their December meeting and is scheduled for a public hearing on January 16th, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Item 12, bills pending 2017-95.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Hawk Transit Advertising.
Mr. Bangy?
Yes, thank you. So this, this bill would allow a contract with Hawk Advertising to continue to provide advertising on the city buses. It's the company who is doing that presently. And so the city has provided basically frames in which the advertising signs go in, but the contract basically establishes a minimum dollar amount that they would provide to the city, and then there's also a cost share at 50% above the minimum. And so, again, this is a company that the city has worked with for these last three or four years and has been satisfied with the arrangement that we've had.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Hussey?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-96.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $553,402, $2.21 agreement with CSE Enterprises LLC for the ABB Pump Station Replacement Project.
Mr. Bangy?
Thank you. Yes, so this is a construction contract for the reconstruction of a pump station that's located near ABB. And so that pump station currently serves that facility as well as sewer that's, or sewage that's being delivered to that station from Holt Summit. The, basically, the pump station pushes that sewage across through the airport and lifts it high enough to enter the headworks of the water treatment facility. And so this contract would basically just rebuild that existing pump station.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-97.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Rehagen Electrical Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $97,938 for the Christie Building standby power project.
Mr. Bangy?
Thank you. Yes, this contract would install a standby generator for this building. The generator would be sized that it could actually accommodate all the electrical loads that this building sees at any one time, and so the entire building could be powered. This project came about, over the last 18 months, we've had two different occasions where we've lost power to this building. One of them was a transformer failure, and the other was a, a gas line was struck in the area, and so they turned off all the power to prevent a spark outside. So in those instances, we were not able to deliver city services, and so at that time, conversations were started about the possibility of the construction of a generator here at City Hall, and this is the culmination of that work. And so the generator would be situated behind the building and would power the building as a whole.
Any council questions or deliberation? Councilman Mahalovich?
What's the status of our planning for a generator for the annex? Does it, does it impact that, or would it?
Right. At one point in time, we had considered using the same consultant who was doing the work on this generator project to also begin investigating what we might need for that generator project. But ultimately, with the renovations that are happening with that building to turn that into the court facility, we thought it best that perhaps that should be incorporated within the electrical and mechanical purview of the renovations. And so, it's, at this point, they're separate, they're separate items.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Thank you. For each of those times that the City Hall was out of electricity, how long were they out?
When the transformer failed, the, this building is powered by three-phase power. And so when that happened, what the, one of the phases died. And so we are still getting some electric into the building, so it was rather interesting. You know, my computer was working, but my lights weren't, and I moved to the next office over, and their lights worked, but their computer didn't. And so it wasn't a total, complete outage, but you know, based on where, what leg of the generator your power, or the transformer your power was coming from. That situation lasted for about a day and a half, if I recall correctly, and then the gas incident, I believe that was most of an afternoon.
Any further questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-98.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of an alley right-of-way in the 900 block of Adams and Jackson Streets.
Councilman, oh, should we start with, well, Councilman Schreiber has a question first.
Yes, Miss Kelly Jackson. I think it's right, the ordinance, but we probably need to stretch it a little bit.
Sure, we call that a Scrivener's error, for whoever remembers Councilman Scrivener. That's right. Okay, so we'll make that adjustment, and Mr. Bangy?
Yes. This is a small piece of alley. It's 60 feet in length. The alley is actually 19 feet wide. When it was first platted back, I believe in 1913, it actually connected two city streets. Back in the 1990s, a portion of Taylor Street was vacated itself, and so the alley became a dead end. And so what this ordinance would do is actually vacate the 60 feet most immediate to that vacated street, so it wouldn't actually impact the public's access any further than the previous vacation had already done. And so, the request came to us from the adjoining property owners. I believe there's some issue with people still using what used to be the street as a public access, and they're trying to prevent that from happening. And so have asked for this additional vacation so that they can stall a gate.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? All right. Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-99.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement between the City of Jefferson and Rich &amp; Associates Incorporated for professional services related to the parking division.
Mr. Bangy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a kind of a continuation of a parking study that began some months ago. The consultant had come back and reported that there was the need for some additional controlled parking in the downtown area. And so with this, this is kind of the next step, we would be asking the same consultant to evaluate, I think, as the contract spells out, five separate locations for them to determine the likelihood that a garage could go in any one of those locations, and then ultimately to refine that down to one or two locations, and then do some financial analysis as to what the rates would need to be in order to support that structure long-term. And so, again, it's just, in some ways, it's a continuation of, or an extension of what we have been doing with the parking study thus far.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Councilman Hussey?
David, do you know the timeframe on getting that study back? I feel like they answer that in committee, but I just can't recall right now.
It looks like, oh, I'm sorry. In six months, it appears, is the timeframe that we'd be expecting the report back.
Thank you.
Councilman Prather and then Mahalovich?
Have we had any similar studies in the past? And if so, how long ago has it been?
I am not entirely for sure. This, the company who's doing the study now, Rich &amp; Associates, had actually done some work for us a number of years ago. I'm not entirely for sure the number of years. So in some ways, this, the work that they're doing now is updating some of that information that they had collected previously. I'm thinking it was somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen or more years ago, but I cannot say with certainty.
So if it's costing us $27,000 to get an update, what would it actual cost be if we weren't just getting an update?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Has the public seen this initial study?
The study about the need for additional parking was presented to the Public Works and Planning Committee at the meeting back in December. And so, at that time, it was discussed that, yes, there is, you know, a lot of parking, but in some cases, people are sort of double-using spots in that their employer might rent a spot for them, but it might be some distance from the business, and so they might choose to park closer to the business even though they would be paying for it themselves or otherwise. And so in some ways, if the city were in control of more of the parking, that that sort of issue could be better controlled.
I guess to more directly ask my question, we saw that in Public Works, and I haven't heard much out of Ward, two residents or business owners, so I think that will impact them quite a bit. I'm wondering how widely distributed their options have been, so now they'll be asked to narrow those options down, as I understand.
Correct. They're to evaluate five different locations, and I believe that we have done some research ourselves and have sort of given them five areas to study. And so some of them perhaps are more viable than others, but certainly, I think, you know, the land essentially would be available to build a structure in those locations.
Are there going to be opportunities for public comment with regard to those most desirable locations?
Right. The contract, I believe, is broken into two different parts, kind of an initial phase where they are looking at those five locations, and then there would be, you know, kind of a matrix that's developed in order to evaluate those. I'm not for sure if there is a public comment period or anything built into that phase of the project. I don't remember seeing one in the contract. But certainly, from a staff level, we could probably provide that information to the public as it's, as it's developed. But I don't believe it's actually built into the contract for the consultant to be part of that conversation.
Although if I could, I would just add that it would go through the regular committee process, so there's certainly that opportunity as well.
Thank you. Any further questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-100.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with BAR Engineering in the amount of $149,600 for the design of the Mesa, Shell Ridge, and Chickadee Stormwater Project.
Mr. Bangy?
Thank you, once again. Yes, this is a contract with BAR Engineering, our company here in town, to design for us repairs or reconstructions of three separate stormwater problems that we have, one on Mesa, one on Shell Ridge, and one on Chickadee. In addition, the contract would provide for them to do some hydraulic modeling and study to give us possible solutions for some stormwater flooding issues that we've had, particularly in the areas of Cedar Hill and Satinwood, and also on, I've forgotten the name of the other town, or the other street, in another area. I'll come up with it here in a moment. And so, they're basically two, you know, two different things that we're trying to accomplish with this contract. One, to certainly see some results on the ground from the money that the council has given to stormwater, and then to also address the flooding issues that we've seen. Douglas Street is the other area. And so, this contract kind of addresses both of those, you know, both an infrastructure element and then also a flooding element, which I think was in the interest of many of the folks on the council, so.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation from council? Roll call, please.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-101.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, pertaining to stormwater floodplain management.
Mr. Bangy?
Thank you, one last time. The, this is an update to the city code, essentially brought forth by the requirements of SEMA, so the State Emergency Management Agency. They had come and done a review of the city's stormwater management and determined that our city code was a little bit lacking in how it described our administrative procedures. And so ultimately, we have rewritten the code following the guidelines produced by FEMA for such things. And so basically, it defines what the role of the floodplain administrator is, and then also what his job should entail, and what a member of the public would, should expect when they come to seek a floodplain development permit or otherwise. It also talks about how inspections will be done and how records will be kept. And so really, it's just an ordinance, you know, that affects the administration side of the floodplain and not actually the floodplain itself. And so, basically, further codifies those administrative procedures.
Thank you. Any deliberation or questions? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city charter may only be amended by a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson. The next, next available election date is on the third of April, twenty eighteen, and any such ballot measure must be presented to the Cole County Clerk for certification no later than January twenty-third. This specific ballot item would eliminate the Fireman's Pension Fund and the Board, uh, which is essentially a technicality at this point, the Fireman's Pension Fund has already been transferred to loggers for their management, and I would be happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you, any questions or deliberation? Councilwoman Wiseman and then Mr. Mahalovich?
I'd like to move this to the informal calendar, um, and in doing so, I'd like to acknowledge that it's not with any concern that I have with the pension component moving to loggers or, um, anything that, that is going on with loggers as it, as it seems to be implemented well at this time.
Okay, Councilman Mahalovich?
I would like to move to take up the bill, twenty seventeen dash one oh two.
Okay, so we have a motion to move forward with taking it up, is there a second? So we have a motion and second, so all in favor of, or any further discussion on taking up the bill?
Madam Mayor, there have been two objections to placing it on the informal calendar, therefore the bill will be decided tonight.
Okay, so it didn't actually require a motion, it only required two objections? I was, for some reason, I was thinking we did have to have a motion, if you, to take it up, is that?
I feel like we do, I was thinking if you wanted to suspend the rules?
Right, suspend the rules.
Two could object, and then we wouldn't suspend the rules.
Right.
But I was thinking that the bill author had authority to put it on the informal, and then Councilman Mahalovich's motion would be appropriate at that time.
Right, that is, I believe that is the correct process, so we, we currently have the motion and second to take up the bill, any further discussion on that motion, so all in favor of taking up the bill?
Discussion?
A discussion on just taking it up now, not the actual bill?
Yes, I'd like to have a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think it, I gathered from some discussion that there, it's the staff's desire, and it actually could save money if we brought this thing forward. Uh, I don't know that we'll learn anything more in another week, and it would, two weeks rather, and that if we want to get it on the ballot, we might as well, uh, move forward with this now, um, and that's the reason why I'm going to, uh, move it forward.
Thank you, any further, uh, discussion on the current motion? Councilman Hussey?
I would just ask for clarification if this is actually the appropriate time to take up this motion, and should it wait till item thirteen, informal calendar, on the agenda? I would just be curious if Councilwoman Wiseman has moved the bill to the informal calendar, should we then appropriately wait until we're actually to the informal calendar to take up said item?
No, this is the appropriate time to take it up.
All right, so at this point, we have a motion on the table to, um, to take up this bill, so, um, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry? Hussey?
No.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
No.
Fitzwater?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, so that motion carries, so we will take up twenty seventeen one oh two, so at this time, is there any discussion or deliberation on this particular bill? Councilman Mahalovich?
Uh, I think it's, it's, uh, maybe apt for someone, um, maybe the city administrator explaining the costs associated with delaying, uh, action for another, so a lot, so many, another election cycle, and also so- associated cost of having it on the ballot as well.
Mr. Kroll?
Yeah, um, I don't know, I don't know the exact costs of having it on, on the ballot or, or not having it, I think there are some, um, I think in the scheme of things, it's fairly insignificant, I would say there are some, uh, costs associated with doing some year-end accounting if we kept it on in some actuarial studies, although staff hasn't had a chance really to look at the implications of that, so, sorry, I can't give a better answer than that.
And the cost would be there whether it goes on this ballot or a different ballot, so that cost would exist, uh, it's based on the number of items on the ballot, and so there, there's a cost either way, if you were talking about the ballot cost, I'm not sure. Councilman Mahalovich, did you have a follow-up question?
A comment from, uh, Chief Schofield?
I would just add that I know that the, uh, Fireman's Pension Board at their last meeting really feels that their work has been completed, and that they would like to see the matter resolved in terms of, uh, their responsibilities being absolved, um, at this time.
Further, council, Councilman Graham?
I mean, I totally agree, because, I mean, the, the Fireman's Pension Board is set up now, but there is no action that would be taken since it's been moved to loggers. So the purpose of this board is what? It's what?
And Chief Schofield, there is some training and certification that goes along with this board, it's not just a, a board that is going to not meet for a year, it's a board that has certain requirements, correct?
There is, I guess, maybe a, a bit of gray area in terms of, um, what is required by charter versus what is required in the, uh, pension plan document that governs the board, and so the, the pension plan document that governs the board does indicate annual training is required for all board members, um, and, uh, there is, you know, associated cost with that particular training, uh, so there was some discussion as to whether or not that would be, um, required for a best practice, or if that put us in some sort of, um, uh, situation we wouldn't want to be in if our board members existed, uh, without having the required annual training.
Sure. So is there any reason that we would not want to move forward with this, to eliminate this board?
If you're asking my opinion, I, I would see none.
Okay, council, or, uh, Mr. Kroll?
I would say that from a, from a staff technical point of view, there's not, there's certainly, um, maybe some, uh, policy kinds of implications with the charter, if you want to have a board overseeing something that relates to, um, uh, tax, uh, dollars, but from a technical point of view, um, from a staff perspective, there's not.
Okay. Further, council, uh, Councilman Graham?
For the ones that have some concerns, uh, please help me to understand, is there something that, that I'm missing here, or, or what? Councilman Hussey, or Fitzwater, or anyone else? Am I, am I missing something that I should know? Thank you.
Any further discussion, deliberation? Answers to Graham's question? Uh, roll call, please.
Henry? Hussey?
No.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
No.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes, or bill passes. One, uh, twenty seventeen one oh three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri submitting an amendment to the charter of the city of Jefferson relating to the office of city prosecutor to vote, to a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson.
Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Wolfert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would allow an item to be placed on the April third, two thousand and eighteen city election that would amend the city charter to change the office of the city prosecutor from an elected position to an appointed position where the mayor and the council appoint and approve the city prosecutor, and it may include, uh, an outside person, it may include an in-house attorney to fulfill the duties of prosecutor, and it essentially gives the council more flexibility. During a study, the law department found that only two of thirty-nine charter cities in the state of Missouri still have an elected municipal prosecutor, that being Jefferson City and the, uh, the city of Fulton.